Steve Woods needs to unmute himself. I think he's talking.
No, I am unmuted. You're good to go. Okay, can you hear me now, everybody? Yes?
Yes.
All right, I'll start over again. I'm gonna call the Anna Reynolds School Project Building Committee Order, June 1, 2020. It is 5:05 PM. This is a special meeting. Technically, I guess all of our meetings are special. Next item on the roll, on the agenda is roll call. Jeff Barron, if you would like to do the roll call, please.
Mr. Minor?
Here.
Mr. Sylvia?
Present.
Ms. Stam?
Ms. Dugan?
Here.
Mr. Wetzel? Mr. Wetzel?
Present.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Jeff. Next item is public participation. And I think we have two people. One I know is just listening. And I don't know who Barbara is, so we'll see. Barbara? There we go. Barbara?
Yeah, I'm just listening to the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So the next item is the review educational specifications, and I believe that's gonna be you, Chuck, as well as Maureen, if she need any help or she needs to jump in.
Yes, indeed. I'll jump in as necessary.
Okay. If, James, if you could allow me, okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Thank you. Hopefully, you're seeing the ed specs here.
Yes.
Okay, cuz I don't see a frame around. Usually it gives me a frame around my screen, which one I'm showing, so.
No, you're good. You're on the front page.
All right, great. So good to see everybody again. Hope everybody's doing well. Last week, we sent out the draft educational specification. Last week, this was reviewed with the Board of Education. We presented to them last week. I thought that meeting went pretty well. We had a few questions. Steve Sylvata, so we had a few questions, but other than that, there wasn't too, too many. This is a result of a total team effort between the Board of Ed, ourselves, Jason Smith, the principal. So I think we got a pretty good product in a relatively short amount of time. The ed specs, I'm not gonna go through in detail, but if anybody went through these, I'm trying to zoom in so you can see better if you have a smaller screen. Essentially, it goes through all our program spaces. The intent of the ed spec is not to design the project, but to specify the program that, one for office-to-school construction and grants review to see when we submit a grant application. The second being when hopefully you pass referendum, when we go out to select an architect. That this will guide them as well. For the most part, we're staying within the current, I'll say theoretically, four walls of the building, for the most part, in reprogramming the space as it is. And I'll talk about that in a second. With a small addition for an elevator to improve the accessibility for the building right now, if anybody's been there, you have to do a big, long loop from to get to the, down to the gym level from, say, the cafeteria and kitchen, even though they're adjacent to each other. So we're proposing to put a, an elevator in that proximity to give that a better accessible path for it. So a lot of the, again, a lot of spaces, we talked about the rationale, the project. It really, you know, if you've gone through it, it talks about the intent of the project, improving security, handicap accessibility, HVAC finishes, improving added-on additional pre-K classroom, up in proven technology, and basically just making the, bringing that project to that building up to 21st century learning environment. With respect to the, staying within the building, the reason we came to that is that based upon the maximum eight-year projection for 33, that included 60 pre-K students. The space standard, which is the statutory calculation for what the state is willing to reimburse a district for, was around 53,000 square feet, plus or minus. The existing building area, the comparable area is about 61,000 square feet. So you're about an 85, 86% ratio. When you're at that ratio, basically what it says is the building's larger than what you need theoretically. As Marin will test, we're gonna have special programs and other spaces that are going to help us support using the 61,000. But in the case where we're renovating, the state, state's not gonna make you chop off parts of the building. They just wanna make sure we're not using half the building for a smaller enrollment, and utilize in the spaces, space as much as possible. The other, the other aspect is open choice. I believe that the district may seek to increase the open choice enrollment, so that'll help us also support that space. Overall, based upon my experience with the office-to-school construction grants, I don't think we're gonna have a hard lift to, for them to accept it in what they call space waiver, if you will. That basically says the entire square footage is gonna be eligible for reimbursement. If you, if you don't receive that, and you don't have renovation status, then you get reduced reimbursement rate and more ineligible costs. But I think, and again, we gotta talk with the state. We're gonna be talking with them soon. And I think we have a pretty good chance of achieving both of those. So so that's, that's kind of the tricky parts of, I'll say, the state and the space standard. Again, overall, we're looking at 443 on an eight-year high from pre-K to four, including open choice. Hopefully add to that. Again, the descriptions are pretty straightforward. We talk about the classroom spaces. Again, I'm not gonna go into much detail here. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. We talk about technology, the spaces, storage, et cetera, for all the grades. Art room, the music rooms, talk about those. And a lot of these, again, are based upon, you see the square footage, are based upon the existing square footage that we took off from the older plans. And for the most part, those plans are pretty accurate. So essentially, it goes through all different spaces, administration, instructional. Again, I'm scrolling a little bit quickly. I assume everybody's seen this already. English learner. And so I'm gonna kind of go to, fast forward to the end, if you don't mind, and basically, the second to last page essentially has your program spaces in a tabular form. And this is, this is, some of these are some edits, were final edits. You see pre-K highlighted. We're gonna make that just therapy room. This is for all the grades. That's why that's highlighted. And some of the other highlights are basically where you see Learning Center One Room. That's gonna be in one full-size classroom, but they're gonna have two spaces within it. So we wanna make sure just kind of the math adds up. So that's why you see those more for clarification in that. And then, and then we're just clarifying the square foot, net square foot and gross square feet. Again, that's not required by the state. When you see net square feet, for those who might have a question on it, the state of Connecticut, when they're looking at the space standard, they look at they call the building area, and that's a building code definition. And that's defined as the inside face of the exterior walls. When we estimate and we put together a budget, we're looking at what they call gross square foot, which is the outside face of the exterior walls. So that's almost about a roughly three to, four to six percent differential for exterior walls. If you don't account for that in a budget, you will be short by that four to six percent. That can, that can amount to a million, million and a half dollars, which would leave you short. So you gotta be very careful of that.
A question?
Yes.
So Learning Center One Room, including toilet, two spaces, 390.
Yep.
But the Learning Center Two Room for special education does not have toilets?
John Kopoulos, I don't know, maybe you can opine on that?
Sure, Chuck. The initial interpretation of those two rooms, Stephen, was Jason envisioned the rooms, one room already has the toilet available to it. So that is why that's designated that way. He is looking to convert that space into Learning Center One Room. And the toilet is already pre-existing or exists in that area, so that is why it's worded that way? If that answers the question?
No.
No? Okay.
This is a requirements document. So do we require toilets for all four spaces?
No. No, the toilets are not required. It's just that the Learning Center One Room space that is being designated that way already has a toilet room within it.
Okay, all right. All right. So that, thank you, John. That answered my question.
Oh, okay.
I was interpreting that we needed to have toilets for all four spaces. So, okay.
Great question, yep.
No, yes, it is a good question, but it just so happens that that one room already has the toilet available, so that's why it was being designated that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, but with that, again, we've, we've sent this out, and that's just a high-level overview of the ed spec. Again, the ed spec only needed, technically, according to the state, has to be approved by the Board of Education. We had our first reading last week. The next one is next Monday on the 8th. And we'll be seeking final approval, I believe, Maureen, on that?
That's correct. It's on the agenda as, hopefully, a motion to approve of it.
Excellent. So the aspects really driven, the budget, the whole program, everything's driven off of this. With that, if there, I guess there's any other questions, be happy to answer these and.
Any questions for Chuck?
I have one, actually. That was Jeremy Wetzel. Did we ever, I know if we're gonna get to it, but I keep harping on this, and I just, I'm just not seeing a lot of it. A secure entrance? Is that part of the spec?
Yes, Jeremy. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna quickly scroll back to the top, so forgive me while it changes a lot here. So the, is part of, excuse me, up here, the project will have to conform to this School Safety Infrastructure Council guidelines. This was, these were the guidelines that were passed as a result of Sandy Hook. It's, it'll be part of the grant application requirements. And within that, those guidelines, that is one aspect that it contains. However, one thing we caution is being too specific with the exact security measures you're going to take, because these do become public documents. And most districts will talk about those specific measures in executive session for safety of the students in the facility, but that will be part of it, is upgrading your entries and incorporating these guidelines into the school.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Chuck before we move on? Hearing none. Okay, let's move on to review of a project cost. And again, I think Chuck, we're gonna keep going with you here.
Sure. I'm going to try to go into a reading mode, just to make this a little bit bigger. So we put this presentation together for the Board of Ed to kind of run through the process here, and we're gonna kind of go through this, maybe, I think some of you may have sat in on that meeting, so we may go through a little bit quicker. And if anybody has questions, just feel free to ask, and we'll stop and pause on that. I think this is just introduction. I think everybody knows John and myself from our last meeting. We introduced ourselves, so I'm gonna skip over that. So John, if you wanna maybe go over what we've done since April 8th, quickly? You're muted, John.
There we go. That's a bit better.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Since being brought aboard, beginning of April, we have had our initial site investigation and walked the property and obtained several documents, mainly floor plans and things that have helped to assist, you know, fuller understanding of what the thing is currently being used for and as. And then also, with respect to the ed spec, taking that and sort of working out how the existing building can be redeveloped or reshaped to make it match that ed spec and ultimately the intentions of both Dr. Brummett and for Jason with respect to ultimately how they want that space to be utilized and to put its, put the space in the building to its best usage in the upcoming years, as well as improving everything that does need to be addressed to the facility that we pretty much all are aware of. The next slide, please, will help to show what exactly we did find. And that is ultimately the need to address a lot of the envelope, if you will, the exterior perimeter of the building, the roof itself, as everyone, I think, is aware of, has had some issues over the years. And it is past its life expectancy. The window systems on the perimeter also are not exactly efficient and are in need of repair. As was already mentioned, the entryway needs to be readdressed as far as the SSIC standards. There are some challenges with some of the storage capacity within the school. There is some issues with the canopies. That's the image on the lower right portion of this slide that shows some spalling and efflorescence issues with respect to a couple of those canopies there on the site. And then just overall, some challenging issues with the mechanical systems, the air quality and things that are associated with some of the outdated mechanical components of the building itself. This slide shows what we did initially with respect to the floor plan, taking the existing building and breaking it out into the existing usages of the different spaces. The yellow designates the classrooms. The pink is more the common areas, such as the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the media center, the art room, music room, therapy rooms, et cetera. And then the blue areas, the front administration area, and then also some of the teacher meeting rooms and/or lounge spaces. So this helps to break out the floor plan, allows us to understand what the areas are currently being used for. And then we take that and going to the next slide, please. We, we then reassess this, and with the assistance of Dr. Brummett and Jason and Lou, we ended up reassessing exactly, and ultimately, where things may be better positioned or placed within that footprint. And so we have looked at allocating pods, if you will, or trying to congregate the different classes to, or different grades to the classroom areas. The kindergarten on the lower right, essentially will stay where it is. But then the thinking is to start grabbing all of the first-grade classes and moving those into one area, taking the second-grade group of classrooms, keeping those all in one relative group, and working our way around that plan. We then come over to the media center area and potentially will relocate some of those functions that are there currently, and maybe, you know, reallocate those spaces such as, you know, a couple of the areas for coaching rooms and things. And then, again, working our way down the third, third-grade classrooms and then the fourth-grade classrooms. And in the process of the reassignment of rooms, one thing that came up was the establishment of a pre-K classes. So those two rooms there that are being shown on the slide are being reallocated, if you will, for pre, pre-K classrooms. The existing preschool room is potentially being looked at converting into a nurses' station and some other support spaces such as psychologists or social worker. And the nurses' station there could be an ideal location, just because there already is a bathroom facility there, which would facilitate that and, and also provide more of a footprint and space for that function as opposed to where it is currently, which is rather undersized. So all of these different things are taken into account as we try to assess whether or not the existing plan is adequate to support the proposed new programming. And also, for clarification, on the plan, there are two areas that are shaded in yellow, and this question came up last week, just for clarification. Those two areas are presently considered flexible or swing spaces that are just being used because they are there, but those are two spaces that will function into being converted into the new floor plan and layout for the proposed new ed specs.
You're muted, Charles.
You're muted, Chuck.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so obviously, the deployment or ed specs were done in January. These are the updated revised ones. Hopefully, again, approval next week. But this basically providing, again, expanded level of detail. So I think we went through that already. So the space standard, this is a view that, this is a snapshot of the space standard we were talking about, and this is a spreadsheet state uses to verify the size of a proposed project versus the eight-year enrollment. And they want, the gist of this is the state wants to make sure that buildings and projects are right-sized for the enrollment. That's the eight-year high enrollment. Years ago, districts were overbuilding, submitting application. That office was, for the most part, just passing them through. And then the district would come back and ask for, notwithstanding legislation, to make a space waiver. And what that said was now the entire building's eligible, even though it's oversized. And they would, they would maybe go for renovation status through legislation as well. What the state is doing now is Casa Di Amantes is the director of that group in running that. And what they've been doing over the last couple of years is really analyzing each of the grant applications to make sure that buildings are, again, this right size. If they were, here's the math, and it's a little bit grainy. I do apologize. But basically, this is a chart that says, you know, here's your enrollment, here's your grades, so many square feet per, per student, and then you basically take an average and multiply it by your eight-year high enrollment. Ours comes out to 53,160 square feet, and then the existing building, again, is about 61,644. So what that does is they take this 53,000 divided by the 61,000, and it comes out to about 86%. If, again, those programs are gonna support those additional square footages, had they, had they not, what they would essentially do is take the 86% and apply that against your reimbursement rate. I think it's 57.86, Maureen? Was the last we got from Michelle Dixon last week. Pretty close to what the 17 was. So if they didn't give you a space waiver, that would reduce it from 57 down to, I don't know, probably close to 50, I'm guessing, I'll have to do the math. But we think we're gonna get a waiver on that, hopefully.
Yeah, I think we'll be good for that.
Yeah, and so if we were far less, say if that ratio was 75% or 70%, the state would have a problem with that. And they would go, wait a minute, you gotta start looking at your district holistically and see where you can push and pull numbers and put students. And I don't think we're in that position. We're gonna talk to them. I think you're pretty close. This is a, this is a pretty good fit, in my opinion. But we'll wait and see. So again, that's a very important number for us to understand moving forward. What that leads into then is the renovation status. So everybody talks about it as renovated, it's new. It's a statutory definition. And what's really important here are, is how we go about seeking it and how do you get it? When you submit for the grant application, and I stress this, I think, before, is there, an application does not go into the state as renovation status. You have to apply for that. Typically, it's, it's after we get the architect on board. There's a nine-point letter that they have to show for structural, for energy efficiency, et cetera, to the state for them to say, yes, we're gonna grant you renovation status. What that does is now it takes your amount of ineligible, it reduces the ineligible, and everything inside the property line is eligible for work. If you don't have renovation status, mechanical systems, new shades, finishes, those all become ineligible. Everything outside of the property line is ineligible regardless of your status. You can build a new project, but if you're connecting a lateral to the water main, to the gas line, sidewalks outside of it, 100% ineligible regardless of your status. But what's important to understand is we have to apply for it. It's not automatic. And some districts in the past have assumed that. And then they were told afterwards, you have to apply for it, and then it causes a lot of stress and angst in the district of, wait a minute, now our ineligible's are going up. So we've gone through this process of hires. We're very familiar with this letter here. To the left is one that we drafted on behalf of the district, or actually, we received from the state, but we helped them procure this status at Newington, or not along High School over in Region 14. The other way, you can go notwithstanding legislation, but the state really prefers that you partner with them. And if you do that upfront, they typically will work with you. And it, they, they like to see that. So we'll be talking about that again next week. So, yeah, good, good to just understand how we go about it. Any questions on renovation status? It's kind of a little bit of a tricky wicket, but. No? Okay, great. So move on. So as we were looking at the project and starting to develop the proposed budget and probable budget, what's very important to understand is that because we're staying within our existing space, the contractor's gonna need spaces to work in as we go around. They just can't do it in one summer. So in this project, and looking at the magnitude and the size of it, we felt that we need at least six to eight classrooms for, at a time for the contractor to work and construction manager, if you will, so they can work in an area, finish it, turn it over, move into the next area, renovate that, and kind of keep moving around. And through the programming and looking at the existing spaces available that are not currently used, or at least they're, they're being used, but because of spaces there, we're able to, we're able to find, we're gonna be able to find six to eight classrooms to allow that contractor to take and renovate as we go through in the process for that. So that, that's in lieu of running portable, temporary portable classrooms that nobody wants to do. It's, it's a waste of money. It's just, it's not a good investment for any project. And the state doesn't like it. I don't think the district does either. But basically, we took a look at that and said, can we achieve it? Because if not, we would have to put in the budget for portables. But fortunately, we don't think we have to do that at this time. So the colors are just really looking at what we thought at a high level, or the major areas that would be renovated. The media center would probably, we envisioned that being converted into a couple of classrooms in the first summer, as well as maybe potentially removing the ceilings in the corridors. Again, that's gotta be discussed further, but what that allows is the contractor to do enabling work and install mains, HVAC systems, heating lines, et cetera, that distribute out to the building. Again, we're very early here. That plan would be developed with the architect yourselves and the construction manager, hopefully us as well, and we all look at it as a team and develop this plan. Make sure everybody can live with it. So so we, we looked at that. Any questions on the phasing plan? It's kind of high level. We're still very early in the process, just admittedly with that. The overall project schedule. So this goes into, into play when we're developing the schedule, because we wanna count for escalation. This is a very high level. We call this a macro schedule that kind of outlines what we expect the life of the project to be. Very linear. This one's very simple. This will get expanded if the project goes forward. But as you can see, we're, we're actually now about June. This was two weeks ago. We're now at June, where we wanna submit the grant application. This red line represents June 30. We're scheduled for May, June 26th, I believe, to submit here. And then we'll, we'll talk about that enabling work, that phase two, selling the project, talking about the project through through the summer. We understand a referendum is anticipated for November, along with election. That's basically, the referendum, essentially, that's when your project can start, because you pass funding, you can now select. You can now select your team members, architect, OPM, construction manager. You can see these bars here represent those. And then ultimately, when the architect's on board, you can start that design process. We expect that to be about twelve months for a project of this size. We've, we've done bigger ones, but there is a process. We stop, we estimate, review the plans. It's a process. Go through permitting, planning and zoning, you know, for every project. And, and then there's about a three month bidding period, which is represented from March of twenty one till, no, twenty two, excuse me, till through end of May. And then we'd sign out what they call a guaranteed maximum price proposal, hopefully, if everything goes well. And then we expect about an eighteen month construction period right now. Again, we got to look at the phasing again when the whole team's on board. But we want to have two, you got to have two summers to get this done. And if we do it right, we think we can fit it in. But again, that, that's subject to getting the whole team on board and talking about it. The other red line here is the grant commitment. Typically, if you're accepted by November fifteenth, we notify the state, hopefully referendum passes. The next summer after the legislative session, hopefully the, they pass it, and then you'll receive what they call a grant commitment, and that's a very specific term. Once you receive that, you have two years to start construction, to be in the ground. We don't anticipate barring any outside sources, any delays in getting out to construction swiftly. The state of Connecticut has seen projects, at least that Colliers has managed, and we, we've never had a problem hitting that date. We're almost near construction by the two year, by that date comes. So, so this, this basically talks us about the schedule. Tells us where the midpoint in construction, so we're kind of towards an early twenty twenty three for escalation. We assume about three and a half percent escalation at this point. So that's the schedule. And then the, probably the most intriguing or most interested slide is the, our preliminary project budget. We've used historical data bids from similar projects, renovation projects, new projects. For that to, to figure out what kind of unit prices we want to use for the building in the site. The site we use percentage based against the building based upon the size of the site, the scope of the work. So we estimate new, the, the construction of the elevator and renovation of the building and in site improvements to be, including escalation, to be about twenty seven and a half million dollars. Estimated FFNE, this is furniture fixtures and equipment. This is based upon your enrollment, home room seats. We estimate that to be about one point seven million. That also includes new network equipment, AV equipment will be in one of those two buckets. But that's what both of those numbers there, the twenty seven point five is what we call our construction budget. And that's what the, the architect's responsible for designing to, as well as the FFNE budget. So that'd be in their contract if you get to that point, and they'll, they'll have to own those numbers. And if they don't comply, they have to make sure they do and, you know, change any documents that are necessary. The estimated fees and expenses, this from here's down, here, here down is what we call included FFNE, we call soft costs. If those are familiar with hard costs, soft costs. Fees and expenses are the architect, all your testing agencies, third party reviews, owners, project manager costs, CM pre-construction costs, commissioning. Commission will be required as part of Connecticut High Performance for the building. Build an envelope, inspections, printing, advertising, anything, anything it takes to support the project is contained with those costs. Those are estimated about four million dollars. And then finally, the, the contingency, every project needs a contingency. We're assigned about seven and a half percent against the construction, roughly two point three million. So for a total estimated project budget, about thirty five and a half million. What, what's key with these is, is, you know, not estimating too high, but not cutting yourself so short that you can't complete the project for any unforeseen conditions. The goal is to not borrow as much as you need and come in under. But the key in that is managing the budget throughout the process, starting with the selection of the architect, the design. Estimating the three different components and managing that budget. Key word being proactive in managing. Then the estimated district share, though, it's the most, that's probably the, you know, really the bottom line is what's going to cost the district, what's going to cost the taxpayers. Depending on the space waiver, renovation status, ineligible. Based upon the fifty seven point eight five eight six, I believe it was, that came right from Michelle Dixon, O C G R. We estimate between sixteen and nineteen million to be the district share, and that, that's all going to be contingent upon a final audit. For ineligible costs, there's always change orders that are ineligible, certain FFNE items, small wares that might be purchased that are ineligible. So we, we assume about three, four percent ineligible cost for construction and then apply that to that. So with that, that's what we're, our preliminary project budget is. I think we're pretty close to that unless someone takes exception. But we think this is for, this scope will work. It's a reasonable budget, a fair budget, a good budget to work with. It's not excessive. There's not a lot of fat in it. So. That open up to any questions?
Any questions for Chuck on the, the budget?
Jeremy Wetzel here again. Hey, I, I just, my question would be is, has the recent events of COVID or anything like that driven up the cost at all with supply chain issues or any kind of foreseeable detriment to the project?
Jeremy, at this time, we don't have any evidence to support, I'll say, adding costs for COVID at this point. We are currently, I mean, in a couple of other similar type of projects, elementary school, we're finishing those up. And there were some slight hiccups with some material deliveries, but we've since resolved those. Those plants, it's a millwork plant since Pennsylvania. That got delayed, but we've sensed they've reopened and we're able to deliver all of those. The one thing we don't know about, Jeremy, is if there's, if there's going to be any new requirements coming out of the state, building code or CDC, whatever have you regarding school construction. That's the one thing we don't, we don't know about. It's just still too early at this moment. To look at that, but there's no, no factors at this point. If anything, if we're, I, I would think that if we were ready to go out to bid right now, we were shovel ready. Right now is a great time to get out to bid because contractors are hungry. So if anything, it's a good time to go out, but we're, again, we're still preliminary. What happens, you know, a year and a half from now, hopefully when we go out to bid, a lot of things obviously can change there.
Any other questions?
It, it does look like things are starting to slow down a little bit. I know, especially in the architects field, they're starting to get a little bit hungrier. So we, we might be catching this nice little bubble here, if in fact, we can keep this project moving forward. And save a little bit of money maybe with the architect and then get it on the street and get it out to bid before things start going back. Right now, again, I do a lot of this day in and day out. I'm not seeing any big increases in, in materials. Or there isn't actually right now either a much of a slowdown in work, although they're talking about, a lot of projects are coming to an end. And it doesn't seem to be as many of them coming online right now. That's kind of where the, the street is.
I'd, I'd agree with you, Steve, on that one. And we just put out RFP for Architect Services up in South Windsor, we've talked about. For their, their, their third phase, and we had, for architects, we had fourteen qualification packages come in. So architects are very hungry, all the firms, architects, CMs, OPMs, we're all, everybody wants to keep working. So it is definitely a good, good time to get in.
I mean, also, I don't think we're going to see like we did eight, ten, twelve years ago with the architect fees dropping down to four percent. I don't think that's going to happen, but I do think that those are going to come down. And I think with it, the, the construction industry in general is going to slow down a little bit. And so people are going to start sharpening their pencils to make sure they can keep their crews working.
Absolutely.
That's my gut. I mean, it's, it's, that's all it is. If I could predict it, or anybody could predict it, they, they, they would be not doing what I'm doing right now. They'd be in that.
Yeah, no, we are, we are seeing that. In fact, Steve, with that, and you know, what's important, I think, you know, if you get, you know, if we get out to architect selection is. You said it's a two part selection process. You do qualifications and proposals. So you want to bet, you know, pick those best qualified firms and because if you go for proposals right off the bat, you're going to get a, there's some that'll come in at four percent, four and a half percent. But you kind of get what you pay for too, you know, with that service. So you want to make sure you're getting the best qualified firms, both from the architect process, the CM, owner of the, you know, you, you, you really do give what you pay for with the team.
I, I would agree with that. You, you bring on a four percent architect and that two point three million contingency will be gone before we even start the project.
Errors and emissions, shortcuts and, and, you know, and we couldn't, you know, hopefully for him, while we can manage anybody, but there, there. You know, we like to say it, but there is a difference between the firms, you know, there are the better ones and the ones that are, you know, screaming a crop and they're all good, though. They're all qualified, so.
Okay. Any other questions on this preliminary budget? If not, we'll move on. Which is any other business pertinent to the committee? Jeff, do you have anything for us?
Not unless you want to pick a, a date for your next meeting, or if you want to wait, that's up to you.
Well, I think actually what I would like to do is, Jeff, if we could have you reach out to, I, I'm assuming the town manager. And the representatives from the council, we probably be seeing we're running out of time. We're going to need to get onto their schedule. If they're going to move this forward, we're going to need to make a presentation to them as a committee to get this to move forward.
Steve, we actually, unless they did not do that, we are on the agenda twice in June.
Okay.
Do you have record of that, either Jim or Jeff?
I don't have what the council has, but if you, if they've told you that you're on the agenda, then I believe that you are.
Yes, I, I worked through Jim. I don't know if he's on the meeting yet, but I believe.
June ninth and June twenty third.
That's it, the ninth and twenty third. So we are there for a similar presentation on the ninth, and then hopefully by the twenty third to get approval to go to referendum.
Okay, so I guess maybe Maury just confirm that.
I will. Yep.
Lose those dates because they're, they're key to us.
I can, I can confirm that, you know, we've got agenda setting tomorrow. That'll be as part of the agenda to be added on to it. It'll all be on leadership. But that is one of the items that is proposed for adding to the agenda for the ninth.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. If you need anything from me, let me know.
Definitely. And Charles, can you make sure you send through the slideshow to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then unless there's any objections, I don't think we'll need to meet prior to that. I'm assuming Chuck, you'll be able to be at that meeting with us, and we're going to basically give them this presentation again, correct?
Yep, it's on our, that is on my agenda. Just double check. I'm pretty sure. I don't know, but it will be. Yeah. What time is that meeting at?
They're usually seven o'clock.
They change it.
Okay, I'll put it in there, but it's, it was on our milestone schedule that we had, so.
Yeah, we'll still be seven o'clock.
Yep, sounds good.
And then Steve, at the board, we're having a special board meeting on Monday for the, one of the sole purpose for the meeting is to approve, officially approve the revised ed specs.
Okay.
So that's the last leg of it for the board.
All right, I should be able to, I, I have a conflict with meetings all the time when you guys meet, but I don't have one that night, so I should be able to get on. I'll watch it.
Excellent. If you need any connection information, check with Sophie.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Woods, you have Mr. Sylvia looking to speak as well.
Okay, yes, Steve, go ahead. Oh, yeah, your hand up in the corner.
I just wanted to share with the committee that I'm getting a lot of, I, I'm not going to say a lot, but I'm getting a significant level of feedback. Wondering if we can reduce the scope. The price tag is apparently a little steep from what feedback I'm getting. And so the justification is questioning, questionable. And another item that's come up, just to make you all aware, they're discussed, there's discussions bantering about, about refurbishing the town hall. For Anna Reynolds. Not that that has any justification, but I just wanted to bring it up to the committee for their awareness. Those were the two items that came to my attention over, since the BOE meeting.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Again, I, I, not, I'm not, the committee would like to, to, to try to entertain. I think we need to present what we have. This will do the building. As we believe it needs to be done, and, and I guess it would be the council's prerogative, if in fact, we present this to them and it exceeds their budget or what they'd like to spend, they would need to give us some direction.
Right, I, I respect that. I just wanted to make the committee aware of what I'm hearing.
Okay. Okay. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to public participation. And I know we have Barbara and Ken still. Let me just ask if Barbara's. I can't unmute Barbara, so.
Hi, can you hear me?
Like, yes, we can, Barbara. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Could you get your name and address, Barbara? Your name and address, please?
Barbara Schoolerco, two seventy five Field Street.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to say at this time. I was just really listening.
Okay, thanks for, thanks for chiming in. Thanks for listening. Okay, comments by members? Anyone else have anything else to say?
Steve, it's Jeremy again. I, I'm not sure to do the raise hand thing on the phone here. Yeah, to echo what Steve said, I've been hearing a lot of chatter to, in certain groups about the price tag. And I'm, I'm really trying to tell them that there's a lot of reimbursables here, you know, if we can get our, our ducks in a row. I, I think there's going to, you know, it's, it seems like early opposition to me, and I want to make sure that we don't underestimate like they did with the town hall. The, the price cost, you know, the, the cost of, of materials, the, the contingency, the overall budget. When we go to referendum, we have to make sure that we have a solid, solid number, I think, is, is what I'm getting from people as well. So, and then the talk of the other building has recently come up too, and, you know, I'm not sure how feasible that is. I don't think parents, teachers, or anybody are really going to go for that, but it was a thought that, that I've heard also. So, you know, hopefully we, we can do a little work aside from our meetings here and aside from official government. Meetings out, out on social media or whatever we got to do to kind of let people know that we're not paying thirty five million dollars for this thing. Where it's a renovation, we're actually going to be much under that, you know, way under that, I think, when it comes time to pay the bill.
Okay, Steve Sylvia and then, and then Dr. Broman. Steve, you still have your hand up?
Oh, yeah, I, I'm backing up basically what Jeremy just shared with us, which is fundamentally. The more that we can provide greater detail and understanding that the building itself isn't thirty to thirty five million dollars. It includes the professional fees. It includes the FFNE. It includes site work. And if we can have those types of cost components somewhat framed. Ballpark wise, within that thirty, thirty five million dollars, so that people understand that cost components. I think it'll go a great, great way in us demonstrating the amount of diligence and discussion and transparency that we're trying to provide to the community. So they don't think it's going to be like the town hall, twenty eight point eight plus whatever else comes up. So that's basically what I'm trying to avoid and along the same lines of what Jeremy was saying.
Okay, that's a good point, Steve. I think we could do that. Dr. Broman?
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, I haven't heard a word about Anna Reynolds being put into the town hall. Because that town hall is going to be demolished as part of the current renovation project. So having that space utilized is not even a feasibility. But that, more to the point, though, is the cost of what we have come up with for Anna Reynolds. I mean, one of our charges was not to have any surprises. So when we worked with both Colliers and they've conferred with other architects to get a real cost, not, you know, we don't want any last minute. Issues like the town hall experienced where some hidden costs or costs that were overlooked. This is a very, you know, clear cut cost with supporting details, but I appreciate the comments that we're, you know, we're knowledgeable, but the public at large is not yet knowledgeable. That's part of our work. This is a very, you know, clear cut cost with supporting details, but I appreciate the comments that we're, you know, we're knowledgeable, but the public at large is not yet knowledgeable. That's part of our work. And I do think when we talk about the project, we have to couple it with what is the real cost of the town. And that's where we get into the between the 15 and the 18 million, which as time rolls along, it'll get more definitive, not not 35 million. We're eligible for substantial reimbursement. I'll work very hard to get that space waiver, which I'm certain we'll get. And I believe we'll get that high level reimbursement and that the town's critical cost. Will be between 15 to 18 million, which we have to keep at the forefront because 35 million may take some people back on their feet, but 15 to 18 million. May be a lot more palatable.
And I I think we could also, as we move forward, get them to understand that if we just renovated the building and didn't go renovate as new, we're probably going to be spending. That 12, 14, 15 million dollars and then give up all of the state money because so much of it will be then ineligible.
Exactly.
We and we can do that. I think we'll we'll be able to do that easily to get them to understand. Anyone else?
This is, can you hear me? This is Cindy?
Yep, go ahead, Cindy.
At this point, I have not heard any any of the things that I'm hearing Steve Steve saying he's hearing. I've heard no negative, no comebacks about any of the the presentations we've had so far. So am I in? I'm not hearing that.
So Cindy, I'm not hearing negatives. I'm just hearing the questions. So it's not a negative. It's an it's an understanding of where the money is going to go. And I think there's a little bit of scar tissue that people are trying to avoid, given the experience with the town hall. That's all I'm trying to share.
Yeah, that's it. Yes.
But I do want to say, Steve, in your comment, you were alluding to the fact that people were saying that that was too much. And you alluded to that. So. We need to be, you know, that you're saying that people are saying the price tag is is too steep. So you are saying that. So we got to be careful on how we say those things.
So.
Well, I'm not sure that's a negative, though. I'm thinking that's reality.
I did say the word Cindy. I'm sharing what was said to me. So again, yes, those words came out of my mouth. But those were the words that were said to me. And if we're going, I'm only wanting this to be a success. To the community and for our schools and in the manner that if we're not aware. Then we're going, we might stub our toe.
Again, I think whether the council decides to fund it or not is entirely different, but I believe that what we will present them will be factual. We can back it all up. We have all the data. So I am comfortable moving forward with this. Again, it is the council's decision to set the limit on on spending, not ours. What we were tasked to do is. Put this together and bring them back a budget. That's what we've done. And now it's going to get back into their court and hopefully they'll move it forward because the 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 end cost of the town will be somewhere between. 15 and 19 million dollars. It's not going to go over that. We will get the reimbursement like we're supposed to. And the project will run, I believe, smoothly. And I again, I want to reach out to both Chuck and and John right now and and thank them. They've they've done a lot of work in a very. Short period of time and under really unique circumstances, nothing that any of us have ever lived through before. And you you guys said you would be able to get it done and you basically have. Now, the the hard part is. The next level. It's almost like that was the easy part. Now the hard part is, you know, getting it on to the ballot.
Normally it is.
We'll do the best we can.
You know, you know, and Stephen, all those comments, you know, they're they're very common of, you know, and and we're involved on the town hall project. So my colleagues at my team are working on that and. I'm not personally on it. I I hear it, you know. And and again, it goes back to key thing is 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 it's that proactive management of the budget. We've seen other projects in towns where we're involved where they're not proactively managed through the process. And that's where, yeah, those those costs come in. The bids come in, you have to value engineer out a lot. You have to get quality estimators, right? Quality architects who know, you know, that are good at this and. You know, once the budget's set, you stick to it. And there's going to be decisions made. Every project, you get to a point where you want to do something, you go, okay, well, we can't do it because of the estimates and we. And you and you manage that. And that's how we get to a successful project on time and on budget.
Yeah, and I mean, I am not saying that we won't have some some bumps in a row. We definitely. I I know that for a fact, but again, I I believe this committee is going to be, or this building project's going to be run a little bit differently. This committee will have charge of of this project. And we will work with our professionals to make sure that it is on time and on budget. That's what we're here for. And I think we'll be able to do that. Especially with the people that we have on board right now. So unless there's something else. Motion to adjourn. Someone?
I motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, motion. Aiden seconded, all's in favor. See if I was saying aye.
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 Okay, we stay on adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.